This is Wednesday, September 28. It is 10:09 a.m. And we are here for council time. And we begin this with public comment. So if there is anyone in the public who wishes to comment on the agenda items, which means the council time agenda items only. If you wish to speak up in your, in the hearing room, let staff know or star three or press the raised hand icon on your computer. Is there anyone, staff?
Chair, I don't see anyone in the hearing room or online.
Okay, thank you. Old business. Motion, please, for approval of the minutes of September 21, 2022.
Motion to approve, Madam Chair.
Second. Any comments, changes, edits? Hearing done, they stand approved as drafted. Item 2.2, Kathleen Otto, a jail update, please.
Yes, thank you, Chair, and good morning, Counselors. So I wanted to provide an update over the last week regarding the jail transition. Our deputy county manager, Amber Emery, and HR Director, Will Winfield, and the current chief of the jail did listening sessions last Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday with the corrections staff. There was a lot of positive conversations, a lot of good questions, and we're going to continue that dialogue. I anticipate they'll be scheduling weekly meetings that will be open for anybody who would like to come from corrections to ask questions and get up-to-date feedback. That will probably start after the leadership team is in place. The HR director has also reached out to the support guild to also schedule listening sessions with that group as well. Amber and I did meet with the sheriff's office leadership. This was the undersheriff, the risk manager, and the chief of their civil. Others either had conflict or were unavailable. There's a lot of questions, and the reason why is because we are just at the beginning stages of these conversations. Overall, though, the conversation was positive and very collaborative, and I have zero doubt that we'll be able to work together through this transition. Staff is working on a website that will include frequently asked questions, updates. We're going to set up a dedicated email address for any community member who has questions, to send them in so that we can respond and make sure we're providing that necessary feedback to the public. The leadership team was named this week. Our HR policy permits other, or separate elected officials, as well as the county manager, to appoint specific positions, and these include those positions that require unique skill sets. The team that was appointed provide a vast skill set specific to jail administration, operations, and leadership. This is valuable in leading and the, in the development and the implementation of the transition plan. It's important to have this team together so that they can actually start working with the stakeholders to develop that plan. While the team doesn't start until October 17th, we will be reviewing the components of an advisory team. This has not been solidified, and I do anticipate that I'll be bringing this back to council next week. I anticipate the advisory team will consist of members of the community, including law enforcement, local jurisdictions, mental behavior health experts, substance abuse experts, a representative of the underserved population in our community, community members, and potentially others. Advisory teams are essential to provide specific lens and discuss data-driven processes and services, ensure equity, and drive future policy recommendations. I was also able to meet with the mental health sales tax board yesterday. This happened now because we are in, just at the beginning of our budget process. So due to the budget timelines, I wanted to get in front of them to ask about using some dedicated funding for mental and behavioral health and substance abuse supports in the jail. Supports could include staff training, staff qualified, actually hired to provide services in other areas. Vanessa Gaston, who's our Director of Community Services, and I are working on gathering names and organizations in the community with these expertise to partner with us to evaluate the recommended path forward and to bring this back to that board meeting and hopefully solidify some future funding for those services. Some of the organizations supporting mental and behavioral health have reached out to us in recent months. I've met with myself and with the Chair and others on how to get involved, how to get necessary feedback into what works, what doesn't work, and what are the possibilities. It should be noted that under the current structure, I say "we," meaning myself and the council, external partners, we can recommend policy and services in the jail, but there is no ability right now to influence what services are provided as it's under a separate elected official. The budget recommended to the council, which is based on what is being presented by the separate elected officials, is the only authority that council has. So if the sheriff had a program that he wanted to initiate within the jail or other parts of law enforcement, it is up to him and his team to present that information through the budget process to the council. With that said, I also want to just state that I understand that some of what I'm going to talk about was mentioned during the council meeting last week, but I think it's important to clarify for the community. The council, the sheriff's office, and other personnel have discussed this transition over the years. When I personally discussed this with the sheriff, he did share his support of this transition and his commitment to work together for a smooth transition. This transition does allow the sheriff to focus on law enforcement in the community. As a countywide service, we can provide additional support to the jail. As mentioned earlier, there have been suggestions to assist in making the jails safe for both our staff and those who are housed there, as well as the services that are available. Other jurisdictions who use this model in the state have been successful. We started having conversations publicly regarding the jail remodel a few months ago. This was not the reason for the current recommendation that council approved. This was simply to start that process after many years of people just stating, "We need a new jail, we need a remodel." This was us bringing it together and actually providing the action plan moving forward. Additionally, I have had the pleasure of bargaining in different capacities with the Corrections Guild over the years. They have brought forward ideas, frustrations, recommendations in the past that would not only assist them with their positions, but how it would benefit those who are housed in the jail. This feedback has been shared and was shared with the sheriff's office administration. The staff have a wealth of knowledge, and I'm truly grateful for their service and dedication. Finally, I've had some discussions with some, not all, of our internal and external partners. Overall, there is a shared hope of the possibilities of what can be done to improve the jail and services provided in our community. That is the update that I have for today. I will share information, like I said, when we, hopefully we'll have the website up within the next week or two and get that process out there. The team will be starting again on October 17th. In the meantime, we are still having conversations and trying to get in front of employees. Change is hard, whether it's, you know, the right change or not, it's hard, and we're being intentional and supporting the staff and partnering with our sheriff's office administration to make sure that, you know, they're taken care of. I also note, a lot of the transition, we do have to bargain the impacts with the guilds. So there's going to be a lot of conversations. I anticipate weekly, at a minimum, conversations with the guild. They're a great guild to work with. They're excited, and they're excited to sit at the table and be part of this process. We'll share updates as we can. As you know, bargaining doesn't really happen in the public, but we'll share updates on the bargaining process as we move forward as well. And I am open to any questions right now that council may have.
Madam Chair, I have at least a comment.
Yes.
Thank you. So the one note I had as you began your presentation was the mental health sales tax meeting that we had yesterday. And so I want to just add emphasis. I think you did a really good summary, but, you know, right now, the public is clamoring for information, and I think that was a great summary that you just gave across the board. This is regarding the mental health sales tax proposal. This is one of those concrete examples where so many nonprofits, profits, different agencies, the courts, the PA, everyone's involved, and it's a countywide service. We had presentations by the sheriff himself, his team, on the jail makeup, and it comported with what my general experience has been in criminal justice for decades. Most crime is committed with some relationship to mental health, drug addiction, and it's in the public's best interest to prevent recidivism, whether we do it through collaborative courts, community courts, our reentry program. And so one of the biggest draws and challenges at the jail had been providing medical care and addiction care and mental health care. And we heard statistics from the sheriff's presentation about the jail makeup is, you know, upwards of 40%, 60% of the jail population has those needs. So if we can help invest in this aspect of the jail, not only the physical structure that will need to house it, and Spokane's a good example here locally in Washington State. Other states do it, other counties do it, but getting certification to be a care provider within a correctional setting for those pending charges or sentence will be a huge investment that will ultimately save us money. So I'm hoping the council will, as this moves forward, and the reason why I'm emphasizing is, you know, we get criticized when it seems to move too fast. But we've been talking about this for a long time in different aspects, and this is one of those aspects. And we do have the ability right now to make a financial commitment that will be sustainable towards building the capacity in our jail to provide those necessary services for our inmates for reentry and otherwise. That will ultimately save taxpayer money. And just plain and simple, do the right thing to our inmates. We need to provide care, especially for those who are mentally ill. And we just don't incarcerate mentally ill people. We provide care. So this is an opportunity and a worthy discussion, and I'm hoping we can commit to this as early as possible so we can move this forward. I think you've already built a good team of stakeholders in the community, and we have great healthcare providers here in Clark County that can inform and already are involved in the jail, that can inform the process. So thank you for that summary. Again, this is a concrete example of how jail services and the community will best be served.
Madam Chair.
A dance from council.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Councilor Rylander.
Just some general comments and requests. The perception of some members of the public is that this has been a very sudden action, that there's not been a lot of background, that certain people were caught unaware, put back on their heels, et cetera. That some of the decisions that are even naming the director of the department, et cetera, rapidly can leave a taste in some people's, some members of the public's, their mouth that things are sort of being rushed through or secretive or anything else. So we can't, it's hard to deal with actions that have been taken, but we can certainly look ahead. And so my personal request is that as the website is built out, the page and the FAQs put together and so forth, that we do everything that is within absolute reason that isn't blocked by executive privilege or other special situations, do everything we can to make sure that the public has the awareness of what's going on, what steps are being taken, and even to the point of if we have to err on providing a little too much rather than sort of not enough. And I applaud the setting up of an email address so that people can send their questions in, their comments in, et cetera. I just want to make sure that the public believes that they're not being left out in the cold on this. I think that there's a whole bunch of people who probably are ambivalent one way or the other, where it happens to live. But for those in particular who do have concerns or questions, I just want to make sure that we're really doing everything possible to be upfront and clear and transparent with them. Thank you.
And other comments from council? Hearing done, I think we will move on at this time. And Kathleen, thank you for doing that. And speaking for myself, I know that I look forward to a regular such update from you. Yes, the facts and all of that on the internet are important, but many people like to hear it in a personal way from you, as you did today. So thank you for that, and we appreciate you keeping that up, as we know that you will. Under new business, I see on the agenda that there is none. Is that still the case?
That is correct.
And counselor reports.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Counselor Rylander.
I have four items, just real brief. The Oregon tolling commission that we're representing on canceled their meeting from Monday of this week, apparently based on the large volume of comments that they received about the proposed charter. So they pushed the next meeting out to the 24th. I did have an opportunity to spend an hour on the phone on Monday afternoon with one of the representatives of ODOT discussing some of the topics and some of the details, but more to come there. Attended the executive board meeting of the area Aging and Disabilities Group. Went over their financials. They're doing really good work and continuing to provide good services, so everything's positive there. Was at the Economic Development Council Executive Meeting, and I'm told that they will be announcing a couple of very positive job situations in the near future with a couple of additional companies coming to Clark County. They just can't quite yet reveal who's ours, so stay tuned for that. And finally, I was out at Yakult earlier this week with the North County EMS Board meeting, and the board just wanted to, on behalf of the citizenry of North Clark County, thank the county council for providing the $2.5 million in ARPA fees. They are pulling the trigger, they've got their, we chose the construction company. So they're off to the races, they're going to pull the trigger and make everything happen, but they were, just wanted to say they were extremely appreciative of the support from the county. Thank you.
Counselor Rylander, would you please flesh out for us just a little bit more the tolls group that postponed their meeting for a couple of weeks? What is it about the charter questions that they received that were so voluminous?
I can only deal with that broadly in my conversation with the representative from ODOT, but my impression is that the, many of the parties participating feel like they're being sort of asked to rubber stamp something ahead of time without necessarily having any significant input. There were concerns around ODOT actually chairing the situation, the meeting in the group, and having control where they should be more advisory and listening in the background. So more so that it's sort of appears to be a done deal, all baked, and they just want to put ribbons on it to sell it to the public. And I was trying to make things clear from this side of the river, at least from my personal point of view, that they need to make sure that they try to show what the benefits for Clark County are in any of the tolling, whether it's the bridge, I-5, I-205, mobility pricing, et cetera. So a lot of, a lot of feedback, some of which has been published publicly from commissioners in Washington and Clackamas Counties as well.
Thank you. Other counselor reports.
Chair, Counselor Lindsey. Thank you. Yes, last night, we had a C-Trans, a couple of meetings for C-Trans. The Board Composition Review Committee, which is a slightly different composition than the C-Trans Board, met, and every four years, we have to review C-Trans Board Composition to ensure proportionality, and the Board Committee voted last night to maintain the composition that we have that is, as we feel, proportionally representative of the county with the largest majority being within the PBTA, the transit area that is taxed for C-Trans purposes. The largest representation is the city of Vancouver, second is the county, then Camas and Ridgefield, and then the other smaller cities combine a seat. So we maintained that representation, which also means that by not adding seats to either the city or the county, we also don't have a quorum of the city or county councils on the C-Trans Board, which many of us feel is a good thing so that we don't have yet another public meeting on top of a public meeting. So that vote was last night to basically keep things as they have been going with addition, with that representation for the smaller cities. And then we also had a special hearing for youth opportunity pass, and so the board voted last night to approve the youth opportunity pass, which expands the pass that had been in place for going through the public schools. Those who were in school could get a free pass on C-Trans. It's now been expanded to all youth 18 and under. So every kid in Clark County will now have the ability and access to ride C-Trans for free. So that's my report.
Thank you. Other reports. Okay, new business? No, that's not right. We are looking at the work session request at this time.
The first work session request before council is regarding the floodplain ordinance update. The county currently receives a 25% discount in flood insurance premiums for structures within the floodplain in Clark County. There is an update to the ordinance that needs to happen, and this update is necessary for the county to retain that reduction in the flood insurance. The recommendation is for 30 minutes at the first part of October.
Sounds necessary and good.
Thank you. The second work session request is for the capital improvement plan for parks. They have to have this done before the budget process and also to amend the parks recreation and open space plan and the natural areas acquisition plan. So they're requesting 30 minutes in the middle of October to present the update and get council feedback before this goes to a public hearing.
Counsel, are you thumbs up on that? I see three. Very good. And that is all of the work session requests. Report on policy issues, Lindsey.
Good morning, counsel. Just a couple of items for you. One, the Association of County Human Services, they're kind of similar, I guess, to WASALFO, sort of a WASAC sub, you know, parallel entity, if you will. They focus on human services issues, and their committee specifically that looks at homelessness and affordable housing programs came out with their three policy agenda items that they're going to pursue with the state legislature. And Vanessa asked that I forward this to you for discussion and possible inclusion of things on kind of that tiered priority of WASAC priorities for the council to support. One of them is sort of generally looking at pandemic funding, and the pandemic funding, is it related to homelessness and the continuation of that funding? They don't have a specific request within here, but a number of those federal funding sources as it pertains to ARPA, WASAC or 19-related funding sources are set to sunset, including the shelter program grant, which I'll talk about in a moment. Their other program that they are prioritizing is the hotel motel leasing program and funds specifically for hotel motel leasing. The other one is the shelter program grant. And so the good news on that, we did find out that Commerce, the Department of Commerce, has included continuation of the shelter program grant funding within their budget request. So all the state agencies do an agency request, and it's far in excess of the state's revenue, but all agencies make a request similar to what we have at the county level, where all departments submit their request, and then the county manager goes through those requests. At the state level, all state agencies make their requests. It goes to the Office of Financial Management, or OFM. OFM scrubs those budget requests and works with the governor's office to prepare the governor's budget in December. So it's near impossible to get something in the governor's budget if it's not first requested by a department. So it's good news that Commerce requested that, and hopefully we'll see at least some of that request funding come through in the governor's budget, which then is a starting point for the legislature as they begin their work in January. So what I would like to do is kind of add these things to our list of potential items to look at for the WASAC priorities if the council is agreeable to that, to kind of continue to track these funding sources.
Madam Chair, can I ask Lindsey a couple of questions?
Surely, Counselor Medici.
So thank you. And forgive me if you said this and I simply didn't hear it, but I'd like you to comment on Commerce's maps, the rapid maps for broadband, and any summary you would like to give on the meetings that are occurring with the ports, as well as with WSU and Commerce. That was the first area. The second one was, you know, and I saw in the Columbian that some of the cities were noted for having supported a letter to the governor on a Southwest Washington law enforcement training academy. I was still hopeful that we would publish a letter from the council, and that's different from our legislative priorities, which I think will have their own emotive force. So I'd still like to get that letter out, and wondering if you have it, if you've tailored it to the county. And if the council doesn't want to support writing a letter, I'd like to have it for my own signature. So could you comment on those two topics?
Yeah, you jumped ahead of me. So those are the next two things on my list. One, the rural broadband. So Counselor Medici's right, I gave you an update in one-on-ones, but we did receive Commerce's rapid design study, and I need to get through it. It's a very detailed map, and there is a lot of data and a lot of information in there. And I think it's going to be a tremendous tool as we're putting together the county's broadband action team for us to have maps that denote the existing areas of service, the existing areas where deployment of fixed broadband makes sense, where there's a good, solid argument to be made for a partnership to apply for the state broadband office grants for those funds, and then the areas further out in the rural areas where it makes more sense to look at a fixed wireless solution. Right now, the technology is such that the fixed broadband, the actual in-street broadband, is going to provide more reliable and better service. However, putting broadband to every residence, every address within the county is just simply cost prohibitive. And the fixed wireless solution can be a very good solution for those areas that are more remote, that are more forested, that are just further away from anything else where drilling that broadband connection just fiscally doesn't make any sense. So the map does a very good job of analyzing where those pockets within the county are and where kind of that tipping point financially lies. So I'm going to go through the map and get that ready. We're, I'm waiting on a few additional names to hopefully join the broadband action team, and then we'll work with Kristen to get the next meeting scheduled for the group. So the wheels are turning, and hopefully we'll be prepared. We are under the understanding that the next state broadband office grant round will be released in November, so we don't have a specific date on that yet, but that's kind of what's coming down the pike there. As far as the law enforcement center and the legislative request there, so I spoke to Josh about this one, and I think that there's, the recommendation to do a letter, I think there's kind of two ways that we could go about doing it. One, we could simply send a letter right now, and that's absolutely something that we could do. An alternative to that is to have the council enact a resolution now, and we can send that to our delegation, and we can do a press release regarding that. That's what the Spokane City Council did regarding their support for the expansion of the existing Spokane Center. And then also send a letter in December based upon what we see in the governor's budget. So the, our legislative delegation's going to be looking at the governor's budget. They're going to be looking at, okay, this is what's actually included in the governor's budget. What, what do we make of this? And so by then, we're going to have a more firm idea of where does our legislative delegation stand on this proposal? What exactly is being proposed? Is there a specific amount of funding for Southwest Washington? Is there a specific amount of funding overall? And then we can comment on that and really narrow. And then we can comment on that and really narrowly tailor the letter to our legislative delegation and to the members that are involved in this. So that gives us kind of two bites at the apple. So that's the suggestion from Josh and I, if that's what you want to move forward with.
I do like the idea of it being coupled with a resolution because that does give additional impact, and I'd like to see us do that.
So I would concur in that. I just would like to move forward if we can. I know that some counties have already done that, some cities, all the cities in our county have already done that. I'd like to get ours done.
Okay. I will work on a draft that I can have for council time on the 5th, and then we can have it ready to go for the council meeting on October, looking at the calendar, October 18th.
Anything else, Lindsay?
Nope, that's it for me today. Thank you.
All right. We will move into executive session on just one item that should take about 10 minutes, RCW 42.30.110, section 1I. Attorney will be present, and we will have no report after, although of course we will come back into council time to adjourn. It's 10:41 right now, I would say let's meet back here at 10:53 for that adjournment. And meanwhile, I'll see you in executive session, council. Are we recording? Yes. Today is Wednesday, September 28th. It is 10:55 a.m. We have concluded our executive session. There is no report out, and council was present during that meeting. So at this time, we are back into council time simply for the purpose of adjournment. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you. Bye-bye.